All right, we have a special recognition.
Yep.
All right, we'll have special recognitions now.
Okay, so this is always my favorite part and actually I see all of our UC students in in the crowd and Dr. West, she did inform me that you guys have in your mind that board meetings can be a little bit explosive, lots of drama. Well, you've come to the wrong one. We don't have that here. So we do lots of loving on people at our board meetings. Tonight is the first one of the year where we actually get to do that. So for anybody that doesn't know how this works, every month before a board meeting, we have Ms. Shawna, she sends out an email and says, is there anyone that would like to nominate another staff member or an employee for going the extra mile award? And so these awards are nominated by their peers or by other staff members. And so we have several of those tonight and then we also have a student recognition that will be given by Ms. Toria Shelly. So the first one, I'm gonna read this and then I'll make sure you get the plaque or you can give the plaque, either one. The first one is for our school principal, Ms. Parton. And the staff member nominated Ms. Parton, and this is what they said. Ms. Parton has taken on the job of principal with a calm spirit and takes criticism with grace and dignity. She is thoughtful and energetic. Ms. Parton greets everyone she passes and works more hours than anyone should have to. Ms. Parton doesn't mind having to try again. I don't know how she does it, but it's rare to work in a place that so often asks for feedback and has created a safe environment for honest and helpful feedback that makes our school better every day, week, month, and year. I think that's so true. I mean, that was the sweetest. That's great. I didn't get it. Oh, listen, Ms. Shawna, she said, are you allowed to tell me who wrote it? I don't know, she might keep the secret. I don't know. I didn't get it. I didn't get the nomination. Okay, the next one, I'm super excited about this one too. Ms. Johnna Cruzenberry is one of our second grade teachers. She came to us last year before Ms. Cruzenberry. Now, this is not what's written, this is just from my heart, but before Ms. Cruzenberry stepped foot in the door, I had the admin team running to tell me about this interview and how blessed we were gonna be to have Ms. Cruzenberry join our staff. So this is what one of your peers said about you. Ms. Cruzenberry is an exceptional educator who truly embodies each of the Jacket learner competencies. At the beginning of this school year, one of her second grade teammates was on maternity leave with a long-term sub, while the other was a first-year teacher. Ms. Cruzenberry took the initiative to ensure that everything was in place for a smooth start. She worked diligently to prepare materials, support her colleagues, and create a seamless transition for students moving from first grade to second grade. She dedicated hours to analyzing data from the previous grade level to ensure her students received targeted and effective instruction. I can't tell you how happy that makes my heart. That's the first time I've read that. That is what I want here, someone who will just take that initiative. This person says Ms. Cruzenberry's impact goes beyond her grade level. She is a consistent source of encouragement and positivity for the entire school community. She is more than deserving of the Going the Extra Mile Award and we are incredibly fortunate to have her as part of our Jacket family. I agree. (applause) I think that's really, really awesome. Oh, I'm so excited to give this one. Okay, board members, I want you to know, I love all of my staff, but there is one person in this room right now that has worked so hard for me. His name is Mr. Dylan Lawson. And Dylan, I didn't write this, although I tell you all the time, you're my favorite employee because this man helped me carry out loads of books for what, three days Dylan? Backbreaking labor. He took care of me over the summer. But someone else nominated you for this award. They say Dylan always has the best attitude. I could not agree more. Does even more than is expected of him and especially over the summer break. He threw away tons of paper and books. I didn't write it, I promise. Dylan always tells teachers or anyone to have a great day or a great weekend. It's so nice to see him in the hallways. Dylan does an excellent job of keeping our school clean and our school culture positive. So Dylan, thank you for going the extra mile. Come on up. (applause) And I would imagine Ms. Carrie Ann may have helped write this, I don't know. Because we sure appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, for student recognition, I'm gonna invite Ms. Toria Shelly to come up and talk about, Ms. Shelly, I'd love for you to just also take a minute to talk about all the awesome things that you're doing. All the things that we're doing this week, if you didn't know, it's called All In for Ag Week here at Williamsburg and actually across the state. So I'd love for you all to talk about that.
Well, you have all night.
I know, because it's been a long process.
Yes, I'm a little tired, but I do better the busier I am, I'm that type of person. And I love what I do and I truly mean that. For all of you young folks, make sure that what you're going into is something that you're super passionate about because teaching, you're not in it for the money or the time, like you're in it because your heart is there. So just keep that in mind. I'm just gonna touch on a few things and then do our student recognition, which is standing next to me, and then he can add anything else that he would like to. So like Ms. Housekeeper said, it is Teach Ag Week, so it's a little different than FFA Week, which we do in February, but we've really tried to incorporate the younger grades, which is a blessing for our school. We have preschool all the way through 12th grade and that's something beautiful. Other schools are trying to go out to their elementary schools, but we're in the same building. So the first two weeks of class, and now we're into the third week of school, my high school students got started super fast and they started preparing agricultural-related lessons. And so they have been going into these elementary classrooms all week and through Friday they will be doing that just to give a little bit of lessons and they're practicing their public speaking skills. Along with that, Zaden, which I'll mention more about here in just a minute, has single-handedly handled our Dare to Dairy, and that is gonna be a program tomorrow for all of middle school, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So they're all gonna be in the gym, they're gonna be making butter, they're gonna be making ice cream, and then we had another student that's gonna be doing like dairy-related jeopardy with them. So that's gonna be a really cool event at 1:30 for the rest of the day or whenever it ends, I guess, tomorrow. And then Thursday, Mr. Zaden has also put together our Ag Olympics. So we really wanted to replicate our FFA camp because 15 students go to FFA camp in the summer, it's a week long. Let me tell you something, when you spend a week with children, you know them by the end of the week rather well. So we're gonna do like a fun Ag Olympics thing on Thursday where the high school, depending on, it doesn't really depend on grade, they're gonna be split up in color groups and we're gonna do some fun activities. So you'll certainly see pictures of that. Just backing up to FFA camp we went to in June, in July, at the end of July, actually no, that was August, my bad, we went to the State Fair. And so I would like to take a second to show you Mr. Zaden's awesome work. He entered into the Ag Mechanics at the Kentucky State Fair through FFA. We also entered some 4H competitions while we were there as well. On the table, if you're wondering what that is, I want you to go show it, because it's really cool. He worked at his grandparents' house. This was not anything to do with me, it was me saying, hey, I want you to do a project, you should do something. And he took it and ran with it. He got a blue Danish ribbon, so in 4H and FFA they have a Danish system, which means there's blue, red, and white, and that is like how you do overall. Unfortunately, he did not pledge, there were some really good projects, but his was phenomenal as well. We also had floral design crafts that were sent through the state and we had some knitting, some crochet, some photography, and several of those also received a blue Danish ribbon. So congratulations to those kids.
That's nice.
It is, he did a very good job. Moving on, so we did the back-to-school bash, if you saw me driving like a full-out front in the corn bin train, that was me being the corn conductor, the kids loved it. We were trying to give a sensory thing to them and we will have the grain bin back later on this week. We're probably gonna do it Thursday and Friday out on the playgrounds, the kids can just enjoy that. And then that brings us to this week, Teach Ag Week, and then at the end of October, we've been fundraising like crazy, you'll see my emails about that, but we are going to the National Convention in Indianapolis. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to my student recognition because that's one of the biggest recognitions that you can be asked, is that National FFA Convention all across the country, so all 50 states, they can apply to be in the National FFA Band. And Zaden sent in a video in July and only 80 students were selected all across the state and he was selected to be in the National FFA Band. So let's just give him a round of applause for that, because that was awesome. (applause) I think that also exemplifies the beauty of this school because not only are you an FFA, but because we have a great music program, then we can have students that are just talented all over the board and have really well-rounded students. Along with that, just a few highlights about him, is he was the first ever FFA member to earn the state degree. So in FFA, you have the Green Hand, you have the Chapter, the State, and then the national level. So right now, he's at the state level and hopefully in a few years, he will earn that national degree award. Along with that, he's also interviewed and is our regional sentinel for the region. There's about 13 schools in our region and he's also holding that office as well. And I think that's all I can come up with right now, but there's so much more. I can't commend this kid enough. He is great, he's been my president for two years, and I'll shut up now because I can get long-winded, but he's just a really phenomenal student and we're so happy and proud of Zaden.
So Ms. Shelly, come on up. Come up and give him his award. He's gonna get a picture with you. And I'll let you give it, not his mom, he's got plenty with mom.
Tell mom to sit down.
One of my favorite things he's ever said was, he came in, it was like my first year, and Kim Williams was the chair, and we got home, he goes, hey dad, don't worry, me and Kay will, we ran the board meeting.
I wish they did not.
I wish they did not.
This is my favorite moment.
We, uh, we do wanna thank everybody for the recognitions, the, uh, staff and student. It just reminds us what a special place we have here as part of a Jacket family. So we celebrate everyone, and, uh, certainly these recognitions are well-deserved, and we, we certainly appreciate that. Uh, now we have a special speaker. First one is Timothy Wyatt, Media Arts Teacher.
Hello guys, how you doing? Um, I was just asked to come and talk a little bit about, uh, what we're doing. Uh, primarily, uh, newspaper and bringing back the Jacket Newscast, um, which I was actually talking to some other teachers today, and it seems like it's not been like a continuous staple here in about 20 years or so. Um, so I don't know if any of you have seen, we actually had like the first kinda quasi-episode out. We, we took the first week with that group and kinda went around the school and talked to staff, students, administrators about kinda how the first couple of days of school was going. It was more so just a practice exercise, but, um, I thought the footage was pretty good, and I didn't want it to go to waste, so we went ahead and edited together and put it out last week. Um, so that's on our YouTube page, the school YouTube page, if you haven't seen it yet. Um, we're actually currently working on the first real episode, you know, with like, you know, a student sitting at an anchor desk and, um, doing legitimate newscast. Uh, we actually finished our outline for that today, so that should be starting within the next two weeks, hopefully. Um, same thing with the newspaper. Um, everybody's got assignments, hopefully having, we have a tentative deadline on Friday, so hopefully we have those, those turned in, and I can start working on layout, and helping kids learn how to do that. Um, but the death, the, I'm looking at like October 1st as the, at the latest, for that first issue to be out, and then hopefully will be like a monthly thing from, from there on out at the, you know, as far as the timeline goes. Um, we actually have someone here covering the meeting right now, my daughter Laili. So she's, she's kinda like half in the newspaper, um, class, because I offer it during the sting period as well, so kids that can't take the class, because she's a musical theater, um, that wanna participate, they can still, you know, help, um, and be a part of it, so it's going pretty good.
Well, I want to, I just wanna make sure everybody in the room understands what a gift we were given. So first of all, Laili, your dad can totally help you, because he used to be sitting where she was sitting every board meeting. He knew exactly what to write up. Um, all, all positive, right? All positive. But let me tell you what has been a dream for me. I have someone who is, a- and for UC students, I want you to hear this. So it goes back to what Ms. Shelley said to you, picking something to do with your life that you're passionate about is critical. So Mr. Wyatt worked for the News Journal, did all kinds of cool things as a journalist, and we had a posting for a media arts teacher. And he called and he said, I don't really know if I'd be even remotely certified or qualified to do this job. But I just wanna let you know, I have some ideas for it. And I said, hold the phone. What do you mean? You don't know? Well, we're gonna work on that part. We'll figure out how to get you qualified, but I, or certified, but I'm gonna tell you you're qualified. Because in just, the one thing I wanted to, I would love for you to get them a copy of the Jacket Journal that you gave for the Hall of Fame banquet. That was amazing. Um, it was, it was produced all in color, beautiful work. And then the next week, what do we, what do I see? Very first week of school, he's got his class out in the hallway, taking pictures, doing interviews of staff, going ahead and putting together this newscast, and then while also working on the newspaper. So what I'm gonna say is, even if you don't know if you wanna be a teacher, but you've got skills and something else that you're passionate about, I promise you there are kids in education that want to learn from those skills. This is the change, and I just heard from the commissioner and the governor yesterday and today. And Josh Patrick can tell you, and Dalton can tell you, this is the shift of education, is getting kids ready for post-secondary, getting them ready for after the, after they go across that graduation stage, what are they gonna do? And so I am so excited about what Timothy brings to this community. And I mean the community as a whole, Williamsburg, but I'm talking about in the walls of this school, he gives kids opportunities that they are just dreaming about and didn't know that we could actually do it. And so I just wanna say thank you for joining our team, and I'm excited for all the things that you have coming for, to share with us, so.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
That's another career avenue for our kids.
Yes, it is. And so many.
And I also do this board meetings, and it's, it'll be proper. I know she'll take care of it if you call her, but he was so kind to us, we did appreciate it. Except I did wanna say that if we do have a legitimate newscast, it'll be one of the few that's ever been placed.
Yeah, thank you so much.
That's great. No pressure.
We are, we, as alumni and all of us too, we, we're greatly appreciative to have that back, but also look to see how even new things are added to go for the future, so thank you so much. Also, we have a special speaker. We have our coach here, our high school boys' basketball coach. Y'all welcome Brandon Bargo.
First, I wanna say, uh, how happy I am to, uh, lead this program and lead this district. I've had so many people this first couple of weeks that have said, you know, how do you, how do you like it at Williamsburg? And it's honestly been better than I could ever expect it in a million years, because I had a lot of stress, a lot of stress that was going on when I took the job. And I've had tons of questions, um, and everybody has given me a helping hand. And that has went, meant so much to me and helped me so much. Uh, first, I wanna talk about a little bit my background. Um, I am a 2016 graduate of Barberville High School, and I'm a 2020 graduate of Eastern Kentucky University, where I worked for the men's basketball program there. Uh, I worked under a head coach, A.W. Hamilton, which has, he honestly changed my life. He's like a second father figure to me, somebody I talk to every week. He, uh, he's done a lot for me, uh, over the years. And then after, after I left EKU, uh, it was really hard for me to leave EKU, because I had the opportunity to stay. And I had the conversation with Coach Hamilton, I said that, you know, I, I wanna kinda take my own leap and do my own thing in coaching. So he, he helped me out, and I got an assistant job at, uh, Brea College for the men's basketball program there. And that was 2020, and 2020 was during COVID. So we had 10 games, no fans, we went 1-9, and it was the most fun I'd had around basketball in my life. And that was when I kinda decided, like, I wanna be around basketball, because, you know, that was, that was grueling. Like, because Brea College is a different breed, and going 1-9 is also a different breed. So when I went through that, I realized, you know, I can do this. And then, uh, Union College called me. I got a phone call from Union College, and they said, you know, well, Coach Kevin Burton was the coach at the time, and he said, you know, I know you're from here, and I know, I've heard good things about you. Would you be interested in coming back? Long story short, I did come back, and I had six months there. Well, then my alma mater called Barberville, and they said, you know, there could be a P, P position and be an assistant for our program. And something I'd always, one of my lifelong dreams was to coach at Barberville High School. And I did that, and I, you know, as being an alma mater, I wanted to come back and impact the place that impacted me. And about two years in, at Barberville, we won the district my second year, and I was like, I, I wanna get my own program. And Williamsburg was a place I had in my mind, and I was like, it's a similar school district with a smaller number of enrollment. And as soon as the job came open, I think I checked the school website about every day to see if the job was posted, because I knew I wanted, wanted to be here. And, um, I am so happy that it's happened. I do wanna say, um, as far as basketball, third and fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade, we're working diligently on that. Third and fourth grade is taken care of, fifth and sixth grade is almost taken care of, it's not done yet. And our varsity baseball coach, Brendan Patrick, is gonna take over eighth grade program. He has been awesome. He's awesome. Been one of those people that I've asked a million questions to, and he's been tremendous. Um, as far as, uh, the program, um, three things. I got ABC's, academics. Um, my thing with academics is I don't wanna meet a standard, I wanna set a standard. So if you have a B, I want you to get an A. If you have a C, I want you to get to a B. That's kinda where I sit with academics, because I don't wanna set, set 'em short, say you gotta get a C, because that's not, not what I want you to do. I want you to try to, you know, shoot higher. Basketball, obviously, uh, schematic-wise, I kinda wanna fit my personnel. And where we're at right now, it's, it's, uh, I think I'm gonna have a lot of really good athletes. So that's gonna kinda be a work in progress when I can get my hands on them, obviously with working with different sports. I haven't got the opportunity to do that yet, but I think we're in a really good spot. I really like my younger core. Um, the people, I, I, and there's people that will tell me, like, you know, I think, I think you could be rough here. And I was like, I don't think so. I think we're sitting in a, sitting in a good, pretty good spot, short term and long term. And C stands for character. I really want my guys to be staples in the community. That's the number one thing, because, one, these kids in these hallways look up to the older guys that are, that are in the program. So many things you could do to be a good character. Get on, get on out in the community. Um, there, there's tons of good ideas that I have. Um, but if anybody has any questions for me anytime, I'm always, uh, an open book and will be willing to, to answer any questions, always be a helping hand to anybody. Thank you, guys.
I like to say, we're sure glad you're here.
Yeah, we wanna welcome you, and we, we want people here that wants to be here, and we wish you just a great things and be great competitors, great people, great students. So thank you for sharing with us and being here tonight.
Appreciate you, guys.
Yep. All right, now we'll have our superintendent principal comments.
Kay, um, we have had the honor of having Commissioner Robbie Fletcher come to our building. He came on, actually, it was great. He came on Old Fashioned Trading Days. Um, Roger got to meet him. Um, basically, I have heard him speak multiple times about the local accountability system and the shift that we need to make with learning. And it's not just about a test score, it's not just about the instruction that's happening in the classroom, but it's about the experiences kids have. And so we've been talking about that since I've been superintendent here, is how do we make sure that what kids are learning, they remember? It's relevant and it's meaningful. And while we do care if our academic achievement increases, we know enough by now about the accountability system that it changes with the weather. So like, we were just informed, Josh can tell you, we just were informed yesterday, confirmed, there will be no color rating system again, okay? So yeah, that's great, but then also, it, it does not allow, it allows a frustration within our school systems, where teachers cannot learn the accountability system fast enough to know where we stand. And so this has been my heart forever. That's why I've never, like, just, you know, beat the dead horse of assessment, because assessment changes so much, you can't even count on it as a tool to make a difference with your kids. But you know what we can do? We can make sure kids are excited to show up every day, and that we're providing them opportunities that they may not have if they didn't walk through the door. So that's what we're trying to do here. And he came, and I felt like it was critical for him to just see our culture. I mean, this is a completely different world. When you've got preschool through 12th grade in one building, they don't have those anymore. And I've, I've said it, but people have to believe me now, hopefully. We have the greatest opportunity in this building, across all 171 school districts. I believe we can be the very best, because we love kids for 13 years. And so Dr. Fletcher came in and kinda just gave his story, and then talked about what local, local accountability looks like in the everyday world. And if you take a minute and you think back, what was your most memorable learning experience ever? And learning experience doesn't mean that you enjoyed it either. One for me was my mother passing away. That was a learning experience. If you go back to what you remember most about learning, and, like, what experience taught you the most, it stands out in everybody's head. That's what we're trying to do here, is create experiences, like the train at the Back to School Bash. Like, kids will forever remember that. Creating experiences, the Dare to Dairy, I guarantee kids are gonna remember milking a cow in the gym tomorrow. And I can't help but bring up the day we had the entire petting zoo come into the building. Like, those are experiences. Ms. Parton even said, I finally get it, Ms. Housekeeper, when I walk past the elevator and the doors open and a goat walks off the elevator. I get it. I get what you're trying to do here. So that's what we are trying to do at Williamsburg, but the, the blessing is, that's what's happening across the state. And so I'm just super proud of the work, and just even hearing Brandon Bargo talk, and hearing Ms. Shelley, hearing Timothy, you all have to be able to see the type of people that we are recruiting here. It's people that put kids first, people that only care about the kid. That's what we're trying to do here at Williamsburg, and I, I finally see it happening. I see it. I see it happening, so I'm excited about what we're doing. That's all I got to say.
Principal.
What about the principal?
I thought that was good speech, though. That's, uh, that was, that, that is motivating. You see why that we love our superintendent very, uh, inspiration, motivation, and, uh, and great things are happening, and we expect that just to continue to happen down the road. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
I will say too, just a quick comment. Um, we had our first day of our new team meeting today with our elementary grades, and something that we saw consistently that I think is a huge win from last year is we focused a lot, especially on the second half of the year last year, on academic language and academic vocabulary. And that is something that going into this year, we have seen tremendous growth in. Teachers were coming in today saying, these kids are already leaps and bounds ahead of where, like, if we're last year coming into the year. And I think that that's just, you know, it seems like a small thing whenever you're talking about vocabulary, but when you're talking about academic language in general, and seeing that across the board as a growth area, and we're seeing that going into this year, I just think that would be a good one for us to celebrate starting now.
So after school, we're sitting here, just to give you an example, and a third-grade teacher came in. She said, well, I'm gonna tell you what, and, and if she's, I wish she was in here, so she could just say it. She said, I'm gonna tell you what, this is the first year since I've taught here that I'm not hearing third graders come in saying, well, I'm plus-ing and I'm minus-ing this. They're using actual math language, and so I was like, woo, that's so great. So good things are happening, good things are happening, so I appreciate that reflection.
Yeah, I think that's great. A lot of times when you're on the, on the same page, you speak the same language, so I think that's a, that's a huge thing, so thank you, thank you for sharing that with us. Now, it's time for our public matters, here in our delegation, so each person, anybody that wants to address the board may do so at this time. All right, we have any staff comments? WEA representative?
I'm here as Mr. Brock's proxy.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, you just threw me off right there. Hope they got that on, hope they got that on camera, that's right.
I know a little bit better than that, um, but he's actually, uh, both managing and coaching the K-two, K-through-two, and then third and fourth football that's going on actually right now, so if you all get done, wanna go check it out, it's going on. But he apologized that he couldn't be here. He just asked me to let you know where he was.
Thank you.
I appreciate he's out there coaching.
Go Jackets. All right, we're at the point now that we welcome you to stay. We also provide an opportunity for you to leave if you don't want to sit through the whole thing, and so you can thank us, and, uh, if you, it's time to be dismissed if you wanna, wanna be. So if you wanna make a run for it, you can, or you can stay.
Now, UC students, I'm gonna tell you, I talked to Dr. West before. You can stay or you can go.
Wow.
So, your papers have already been signed, whatever you wanna do. Yes, you better go. What, what's the name? What's Foreigner?
Yeah, at Foreigner tonight.
It's an eighties rock, seven, eighties rock.
Oh, my God.
It's a rock. It's like Van Halen, Van Halen, Foreigner, Boston.
I was laughing because Dalton said it, and that's the one where they called Josh.
Hey, you can go. Take that. Please don't leave it with me. It'll end up broken.
Good job, man.
You're not here, we're not here.
You dropped something.
What?
There's something that dropped right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we'll just, we'll prove it all. Yeah, just prove the whole consent.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda now. So we, uh, wanna approve the consent agenda, also including the items that were added earlier in this meeting. So any questions? Have a motion? Second? All in favor say aye. Those paws like sign. We'll now move into, uh, our action agenda. First one is recommendation approval of the revised 2025, 2026 emergency management plan. Any comments or questions?
I'm looking at, uh, Mr. Berta because I'm just gonna say, guys, um, he has revamped this entire plan. And if you haven't read through it, it's taken a lot of work, hasn't it? A lot of hours. He's made sure we are up to date with local, with local law enforcement EMS. Also, um, he has made sure that he attended the school safety training in the summer. And just a few minutes ago, he said, I'm gonna need some money, boss. I need to do something different with our AEDs and our whatever. So I just wanna give kudos to Brian Berta for taking this on because it is a beast. It is a beast.
Thank you so much for your work and for stepping in, stepping up. We appreciate you. Thank you for that.
Are we in good shape, Brian? Okay.
Okay.
How about a numbers? Have, have you got a number on our enrollment? I'd like to, yeah, kinda interested. Okay, sorry about that. I know it does. September's usually kind of a gauge. Big. That's what I like to hear, big.
We keep getting the students every day.
Eight forty-five.
Whoa. That's, that's huge.
So our current enrollment is eight forty-five. Correct? Great. Thank you so much.
Oh, he can get that real quick too.
Do you have a comparative number from last year at this time?
I think it was seven seventeen or something.
Fifty-seven?
Preschoolers?
That's a lot, isn't it?
That's about cap.
We're pretty much capped out. We have such place for first aid transitions, so we have one in each classroom.
If preschools, if they, they gotta fill out the same paperwork if they transfer as kids kindergarten and now.
That's okay if you don't have it.
No.
So there's nobody fast load if they don't come back next.
Well, because we can, so we have three-year-old preschool and we have four-year-old preschool. And so there's different criteria for both.
Seven fifty?
Sixty.
Counting preschool?
Yes, that was everybody.
Preschool was an additional forty.
So last year on this day.
Preschool, so we're up to forty-five?
No, I'm sorry.
So we had eight hundred count preschool last year versus eight forty-five right now? Is that what we're saying? Something? Okay, thank you.
So around eight hundred last year, eight forty-five at the same time this year. So I, I think that's just, uh, tremendous. We also want our people to be able to hear that. Perhaps you couldn't hear the conversation. So we're having more students, eight forty-five at this time. Last year around this time was around eight hundred. So we wanna celebrate that. Every student is important. And so we wanna thank you for entrusting, uh, your, your kids with us. So keep them coming. Thank you. Uh, we need to have a, a approval of that. So have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like, alright. Now we'll go to the approval of the 2025, 2026 Williamsburg District Evaluation Plan. Any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion for that, for the approval of that? Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. We'll approve it. Also, approval of the School Evaluation Service Agreement with Solient. Any questions, comments on that?
Do we have them in every year? Is this?
Um, Dana, do you, Dana, do you wanna talk about this one? Solient, he asked if we have that every year.
So last year, um, I expressed my concern about lack of someone to do psychological assessments. So this year we have a new contracted, um, evaluator. But at the end of last year, we had a ton of referrals come in for special education. And so even with our one evaluator, we could not get them all done. So I have contracted with someone in case, heaven forbid, something go wrong, that I have a backup plan this year. So.
I mean, in the region, guys, let me give you an idea. I mean, we, we do everything that we're supposed to, to get kids ready to be evaluated for special education services. And then when you're there, when you're at the finish line, you can't find a school psychologist, a, a, a group of people to come in and do the evaluation. So we were actually put up against the wire last spring because we, it was about to be state testing and we didn't have our, all of our kids evaluated. And it has nothing to do with us. We just, it's human resources. It, it's a lack for, a lack of human resources for just about anybody in this region of Kentucky.
I actually sat in a meeting last week with, um, Laurel County and Corbin and both have expressed concern. Laurel County's got four contracted psychologists. They're a large enough district. They've got some on staff, but they've had to get four additional contracted ones, which is typically retired teachers. So the lady that would be doing our testing is located in Western Kentucky. This company is located elsewhere, but this lady, I actually interviewed her and she's taught at Western, taught the classes back in the day and all that. So I feel very comfortable knowing that she's familiar with Kentucky law. Cause a lot of these, like I interviewed another one from California. So.
Do we have to pay for lodging when she comes?
Um, she will do it.
Virtual.
Virtual, okay.
This one is virtual. Now I did pay more for this one, um, due to the company. There, there, it's, it's in high, high demand. So any young person, I think.
These college kids should have part in. Yes, if you wanted, if you want a job, be a school psychologist, kids.
Cumberland is trying to get the program going. So that, that will be an added bonus.
It's in accreditation right now and I got an update for Maggie that, um, hopefully as soon as we hear from SACS and from Cape Accreditation, maybe it can begin in January.
So I mean, it's, it's very much needed and again, kudos to Cumberland's for saying a need and.
Very good. Thank you, Dana. We have a, a motion to approve that. Second? All in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. Eyes have it. Our next item is the approval of the out of state trip to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana with the Williamsburg FFA chapter on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Any questions, comments on that? Thank you.
He went to Williamsburg.
I went to Williamsburg. I'm a jacket. Alright, they have a motion to approve? Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. Eyes have it. Alright, next is approval of the payment application for a hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars, sixty-five cents for the football field project. Any questions or comments?
Just wondering, over two hundred thousand and sitting there for two years. How many more dollars do we have the hell back for these?
And they can't get till the punch list is done?
Well, he wanted it approved. I'll send him an email, um, to get him down there and do a punch list to know if it's on or if he can.
There you go.
He's still not gonna pay it. He just wants approval to pay it when that's done. He's not gonna just pay it just because you all approved it. He's gonna wait until all the final project is done. So Dalton, does that mean?
Or he said there'd be forty left after that. Which at Mount, is he holding, are you holding it all? We're just approving it to pay it later if, after it's.
Yes, he's gonna hold it all.
I'll send him an email to go over the punch list.
Well, for two hundred thousand, somebody might wanna work it.
The fifteen thousand is the last working payment and then the hundred eighty thousand, uh, payment is the retention that's left open that can be paid up.
Gotcha. Thank you. Alright, we need a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like signs. Eyes have it. Alright, need approval of the payment application for fifteen thousand, three hundred seventy-two and thirty-two cents for the football field project. Any questions or more comments?
No.
I lost my pen. Motion? Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. Eyes have it. Alright, now we need approval of the 2025, 2026 working budget. Questions or comments?
How many millions will we have left?
What?
Depends on what we spend.
Well, don't spend it.
But tell him what you, what you told the staff. If he ain't got it. Yep.
Singing and have little. Do we need some of them to be blind? We'll do whatever it takes.
Steven was great. Helped us close out the year, get the working budget started. Um, I spent a lot of time last week, uh, closing out.
You don't wanna come here and talk to us? Too close. Oh, you do project pretty good. Lot better than that basketball coach. I hope you can be better than that guy.
So, um, all of last week, um, you know, Steven had helped us close out the year, get the working budget started.
No, away from you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
They had to have you come closer.
Well, I, I was gonna come up anyway here in a minute. I can't prepare today, Alan. I can't.
The fire alarm going off.
No, but, but about the working budget, um, Steven came in, you know, he helped us close out the year. I was a little worried about the sixty-four page document, the BGL two. Uh, he took care of most of that in a day. Um, so when I called him, he's like, man, you already got your working budget. All you have to do is amend the budgets to like your new grant, your federal grants, allocations and stuff like that. Uh, so I spent most of last week going through a fun two, making sure that was cleaned up. Um, everything balances. Um, I did submit a test, uh, to the state on this working budget. So as soon as you all approve it, there's no errors on that test. So it's good to go. As soon as it's approved, I'll go in and, uh, submit that to, to the SEEK portal and we'll, we'll get rolling on the, on the working budget.
Good job. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Alright, we have a birthday motion? Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. Our next item is the approval of a MOA between Williamsburg Independent School, Main Street Baptist Church and University of Carmel's to open a new community childcare center. Any questions or comments?
They get the great thing.
So this is something that we've been working really hard on, um, building a community partnership with two of our best allies. I like to say we're the trifecta because we get, we have an opportunity to truly create a cradle to career program for our students. So research shows that the most important and critical developmental stages in a kid's life is zero to five. It's ages zero to five. And I'm gonna say as a mother, that is true for me. That has been true for me. The schedules that we created for my boys were, they're still on a schedule. Zimri didn't have a schedule and she don't have one now. It was then at that time that we were able to make the greatest gains with our kids. Also linguistically, kids who are exposed to more than one language, if they are exposed between ages zero to five, they're gonna learn it quicker. So I believe that early childhood is one of our greatest, I guess, deposits into the success of school. So, um, I will say that opening this thing is, it has been hard. We have had lots of, lots of big decisions to make, but I'm so thankful for our community partners. And, um, the idea, I just wanna make sure everyone knows in the public that when we open, which is hopefully soon, when we open, we have a limited number of seats, but we already have a vision for the growth. We already have a vision for how this is gonna expand. And here's what we've committed to. We want it to be done right and not just fast. We want it to be done well and not just fast, throw a Band-Aid on it. We have gone through every hoop possible. So I will say it for him, but, um, since our standing board chair tonight, it has a, um, a conflict of interest because he's also the pastor at Main Street. He will not be a voting member in this decision. So we have a quorum here with three others. And so my, my proposal to the board is to approve this agreement so we can go ahead and make any kind of construction changes or whatever's needed in order to rent the space for a new childcare facility.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. Eyes have it. Thank you very much.
What ages are we looking?
From birth to age, from eight, from birth to three is what we'll start with. Yeah.
And we've got a good chance of them end up right here.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
So thank you for that. And we do want to, uh, ask you as, as a community that, uh, to hear that we wanna make good students, but also good citizens. So wanna be here for the family, for the community. So we're real excited about that. Uh, right now, we're gonna have a little change of venue here. Want the, uh, hear from Dalton, Finance Officer and Carrie about the stuff, uh, staff updates.
I'm gonna.
What's in that?
I was just a cherry LA.
Please don't put this in the newspaper, Lord.
I'm gonna keep it short and sweet with the taxes, uh, since we're getting ready to roll into, uh, twenty twenty-five taxes. Uh, I'm not gonna do twenty-three taxes in comparison. Um, there wasn't much last month. Uh, we only took in one bill, um, for three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, which brings our collective total, um, for twenty twenty-four taxes at one million, fifty-one thousand, nine sixty-six and seventy-six cents. Um, that puts us at a collection rate of eighty-six point ninety-six percent. And just a comparison to last year, I, since I have it on here and I'm looking at it, um, that beats last year's totals at this time by two point six-six percent. Oh, and another little finance, um, update. We have successfully submitted the TAR report, our technology needs assessment. Uh, for CATS, I got the email today, um, that Eric CATS representative has gone ahead and sent that through. So that, that's another task off the, off the list there. Any other questions?
Appreciate you, Dalton.
Oh, it's no problem. I'm gonna go submit the, the working budget and, uh, my baby girl's got me a, a yellow cake.
There you go.
From Dairy Queen. She said, we gotta eat a piece together, so.
That's great.
A big red.
That's great.
How, how does, do we have a projected tax number?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can print off our projected tax number and give it to you. No problem. I'll have it to you in just a little bit.
Okay, not many for staff update. We have hired Sydney Schwink for substitute, Madison Jones, instructional aide, Paula Lennington, substitute, Constance Crisp, substitute. We had one resignation, Erin Mack for transportation and maintenance. And we have one teacher on FMLA and that's Ms. Haley Reeves.
Thank you for that. Now we're wanting to, uh, move into executive closed session. The closed session is for purpose to discuss early graduation for students. Need a motion to do that?
Motion.
Second, all in favor say aye. Those posed like sign. We are now, uh, moving into closed session and we really appreciate you all being here. Thank you so much.